You're...
Well, I...
Yeah? It's gonna hap-
Is that, is that, is that, you did a bad job, one of you.
It's gonna happen be- Well, what happens is after the years-
They did a bad job.
Well, it's gonna, it's, you probably have it in a lot of flat roofs that after quite a few years, you start getting that grass and that vegetation growing there. And because it's flat, then that water just stays there with that. That's holding the water back. It isn't the scuppers, because we sent the maintenance guy to clean. The scuppers take everything out of the scuppers. So it isn't that, it's just the vegetation that's up there.
This is really routine maintenance?
Pretty much, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, that's exactly what it is.
You want less on your page, we don't have to know.
It wasn't. When it was, it was done in 2013, when they replaced that linen.
That was five years ago.
So it hasn't been done yet.
That hasn't been done in five years.
Sure, and every leak that falls on there makes another layer of vegetation that's like a problem.
No, yeah, it's about, it's gonna be six years, seven years, actually.
But our maintenance- Our maintenance group cannot fix it, cannot do that.
They can't.
Why?
Because if they were to rip it-
I have to, I have to interrupt now, because, because several people are speaking at the same time. We have to go, uh, we have to get back to regular order. So, um, first to the board, uh, Rabbit, do you have any comments on this?
Wait till the new board.
Yes, I'm, yes, I'm, I'm totally confused on this. I, I still don't know what the warranty covers.
Outtake.
Okay?
Spray and outtake.
Pretty much, yeah, why do we have a warranty? And if we're not covered by it anyway, why can't we get anybody to clean the roof? Why do we have to spend eight thousand dollars to clean this roof?
It covers that repair that they-
Because if you break the linen, then-
But, but, but we're not, we don't have any warranty anyway. Everything is not covered under the warranty. And I know we've paid this company several, several thousand dollars over the past few months for repairs on the roof. Great, great, because I haven't seen a warranty. I, I have no clue what's covered.
So, uh, Nancy, uh- Nancy, uh, the, how do we prevent this from happening again? Are we gonna have a maintenance schedule to take care of this kind of thing in the future, so it doesn't happen?
No.
We can't.
If you have a company, I'm gonna give you an example. You come and replace these roofs, anyway. And you call somebody else to work or do something on their roof, you lose the warranty. If that roof then leaks, then they'll say, you know what? Somebody went, came up here, they did some work, we're not covering it. That's what the problem is with us.
But the problem, no, that's not the problem. Why do we have to call a different company to come in and clean the roofs? When we already have a warranty with this company?
Because the warranty-
Why don't we let them do it periodically? We've obviously failed this over the years, that we've had this warranty.
Because the warranty is on the work that they did. They didn't do anything but place the linen on the roof, and that's what they'll cover.
Well, how long is the warranty?
My fault. Twenty years, twenty years.
Twenty years since they were set, so...
Twenty years.
That, this is a nightmare, because every time that they will come, they will say, "You need to pay us." Every single time, they will come and they'll say, "You need to pay us, no matter what."
No.
They will come and say so.
We call them for anything that we see, like that leak in the gym, they came out, they took a look at it, said, "It's not the roof." If it would've been the roof, the linen that they replaced, they would've fixed it. But it was not, it was the AC, just exactly as they said. And once the AC was repaired, leaks stopped.
This particular roof, the flat roof, um, that your last, that your last roof is, is, uh, twenty, 2013? It's a 2013 roof?
Eight years, five years, about?
Yeah.
Five years.
That's warranty.
Yeah.
And you're not, there's a man who come and ask for eight thousand dollars.
So it's basically, it's a six-year-old, um, roof. Anyway, uh, we, we need a motion, I, I guess, either to, uh, prove it or to table it again, but we need, we need some kind of motion on ours.
I'm gonna make a motion to table it again until I see the warranty, and we'll take this up at the next meeting, because I, I'm not buying this.
Okay, um, Nancy, is, is, is this, uh, urgent? To the point where it needs to be addressed before the end of March, or are we okay?
The thing is, let, let me, let me send you, let me send you the warranty. You take a look at it, and then you'll be able, be able to make a better decision.
What I mean, like, can it wait till March, because that's the next meeting?
Yeah, it can wait till March.
Okay, so, uh, Rabbit made, made the motion to table. Is there a second on tabling it? Uh, Carl, you wanna table it also? Okay, so, Carl, wait. Second. There's no discussion on tabling motions, uh? Anybody opposed? Hearing none, it's tabled. Next item? Pest Control.
So we have three proposals?
Can you just go, go through it, um, explain them, or give us your analysis slash recommendations?
Okay, first one is Florida Environmental Pest Management. The initial amount for them to come in, and for initial baiting and crack spray, the eight hundred and thirty-two unit, is seven thousand three hundred and fifty. Bi-weekly general household pest control. It's a twenty-four-hundred monthly. Um, rack, bait, box installation, if you don't have the boxes, it's three thousand twenty-five for a hundred and forty-four baits. Which company is this again? This is Florida Environmental.
Oh, okay, um, Rabbit's gonna do it that way. Could you give us a comparison on each item? In other words, like, you mentioned, um, what was the first item you mentioned?
The monthly.
The monthly?
Yes.
So, on each one, you say, okay, the monthly for Florida Environmental is this much, for Iguana is this much, for the other one is this much, and then go down?
Down, yeah. The next one is the Iguana Pest Control. And their initial service rodent control is twenty-five hundred. Their monthly pest control, let's start with the monthly, right, pest control, it's eleven hundred a month. Um... They charge a monthly interior individual unit, this particular company. They charge five hundred, twice, for coming out twice a month for spraying inside units. Monthly rodents control surveillance, six hundred and fifty. So the total, the total yearly cost to maintain a warranty is twenty-eight fifty. Then go on to the third one, which is Tower Pest Control. They have a, um, in their agreement, they will come out every week. Um, the agreement is for one year with a thirty-day, um, termination. Um, they charge a monthly amount of nine hundred and sixty dollars.
Okay, this is kinda, you know, hard for us to figure out here. Um, I mean, I assume that you've gone through the three, and you have a recommendation?
Yes.
Could you tell us what that is?
My recommendation would be the last one, the Tower Control. He's charging nine sixty a month, and he's coming weekly. He'll come weekly. So, if anyone calls for pest control inside, since they're gonna be out here weekly, they will get, they will get taken care of. Like, right now, we have it once a month.
But, yeah, do they, do they have, I mean, references? Uh, do we know that this is a good company? Are they listed with, with that business bureau? Um, what?
No, I have to find that.
What's our due diligence on this one?
What's their score in Yelp?
Having his experience.
Hopefully, I think he was here before. Or he worked here before with another, yeah, on second one. As a matter of fact, with another company he was working under. I mean, but I think- The name is Tower Pest Control.
So the, the difference here is, is, uh, compared to the other two is what? What's the amount difference?
Well, he's charging nine sixty a month.
A month?
And then Iguana Pest Control is charging eleven hundred a month with... I think it's two visits, I guess. Then we have Environmental, which is also two visits a month for twenty-four hundred.
Okay. Um, so if we went with the lowest bidder, obviously, that would be Tower Pest Control by far. But as I said, uh, you, you know anything about this company?
The only thing-
For example, what talks in the news?
The only thing that I know is that he did work in here before with another company. That's as far as I know.
So you know how working.
What, what's our current pest control company?
Uh, Pest Logic.
Pest Logic?
Yeah.
And, and we're, um, why are we considering replacing them?
Because they only come out once a month, and they're not doing a good job. People are still complaining about roaches and-
How much are they charging us?
I don't know, it's off the menu. I think it's like around eleven hundred also. Yeah.
So, still less. Um, I mean, I don't have any information other than what you're telling us right now, so I guess if you're recommending this, uh, you may as well. Do we have to do, do we have to send those recommendations to Pest Logic?
Yes.
What is their applause?
Um, I think it's a thirty day.
Okay. So, uh, and you're comfortable recommending right now that we terminate Pest Logic's contract and hire Tower Pest Control beginning in, what, um, April?
April.
Okay.
John?
Yes.
Uh, in previous meetings, last few months, there's been a lot of talk about the rodents. Are they under control? Does this include all the boxes or anything?
Yes.
To address that issue? Because that was, everybody was talking about it. Now I don't hear any, you know, talk.
Right, yeah.
Is that included? Or do we assume we've got rid of them?
Nancy, could you address that? But, uh, specifically, the, the discussions and conversations, I recall, from the recent meetings, was, one, we had like an intensive treatment that was done. Uh, I believe it was at the Nottingham. And apparently, we, there was a deduction in the number of complaints from that building. But then, since then, I don't know if there've been some, there have been some complaints.
Yes.
Shai, do you, do you recall? Remember, we, uh, had the intensive treat, intensive treatment by Pest, Pest Logic, right?
Yeah.
At the Nottingham, and then the complaints went down. Are they back up, or?
Um, for the Nottingham, no, not as much as it wanted to make first off.
But the board decided not to go forward with having another, um, with doing, with treating another building in that fashion? Uh, because they didn't feel like we had enough confidence in the fact that it worked. Okay, so, um-
Well, what does that mean, not as much? I mean-
Talking about bugs?
No, rodents.
The, 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 no, I thought, I thought it was roaches. You, you asked about roaches, I believe. Isn't it roaches?
Rodents.
Oh, you said rodents, okay. The, the, the intensive treatment was for, for roaches, though, I believe. Okay. All right, so that was, okay.
Don't we already have the boxes? I mean, I don't know, but I thought I saw a couple when I was walking.
Yeah.
We do have them? So then all they need is baits, and to be cleaned out?
The baits.
Yes.
Well, my question was, is that still being addressed? That was my question. Is it being addressed, is it-
Well, let's put it this way, maintenance has been addressing it.
Okay.
We have been taking care of it, that's why it has gone down. I actually, uh, got a hold of some poison that actually dries them up when they eat it, and that's what's been controlling them. I had, I ordered it, and I, I have been putting it in a lot of buildings.
That's amazing, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, is it, yes?
So, at the November twenty-first, two thousand seventeen meeting, we had a bunch of pest people here. Ty Terrell, who was from Pest Logic, gave us this whole spiel about how he went to someplace, and he was like the Pied Piper of, and that our main boxes had nothing in it, and he was gonna take care of that. And that's the company we have now, that we're now looking to get rid of.
Yes.
I've seen that show before many times, I don't know. Seems like it's-
Actually, Tower Pest Control has fabulous ratings, if you look them up.
Yeah, I'm getting the same thing.
Tower, is that the name of it?
Tower.
Tower?
Tower.
So let's go with it.
Tower.
Tower, T, with a T, tower.
Tower, so sorry.
Tower, tower.
Yeah, I'm getting the same thing, I'm getting a rate.
Did you look up tower or power?
No, tower with a T.
So, uh-
I'm closer to the person's name.
Ah, great. So, is there a motion to, uh, to, Rabbit?
Yeah, I, I'm looking at Tower Pest Control too, and it, it's a little vague, as far as, uh, what I'm seeing. You know, they're saying rodent control, replace, uh, baits and maintain all boxes. That's really vague, you know? What, how many boxes are we talking about, or, you know? I, I would like more specifics. And I'm glad that, that we got good ratings from them, and it looks like the best price, but it's still a little vague to me. I mean, I, I, I-
More specifics?
Yes, I would like more specifics. How many, how many, uh, boxes are they gonna give us with this price?
Man, can I make a suggestion? Um, what, what is it that we want, Nancy? Like, what would we like? Okay, if we can put in the specifics ourselves and say, we approve the contract, uh, you know, with this proviso that, uh, specifically this many boxes in this many buildings and so forth, uh, and say, okay, we approve your contract price, but we just wanted to clarify these points, and see if they're okay with that.
Like, the hundred and forty-four boxes that-
Whatever it is that we want. Can we do that? Um, and then if they say yes, then go ahead and, uh, split through the, the, uh, termination of Pest Logic. But let's, why don't we just provisionally for now and say a motion to approve the contract? But, um, anything else, Rabbit, that's missing there?
I, I believe that's the biggest thing, since we've had so many problems with rodents. We wanna make sure we get enough boxes on the property.
Tower shows up very well.
Rabbit? Rabbit?
Since I think it's seventy-seven, so-
Forty-four boxes out there now.
So basically, on that-
How many boxes again? What was the number?
We have a hundred and forty-four boxes.
So, Rabbit, show me where that is in, in the contract, where the boxes, that, where it gets vague.
I don't think he, yeah, they don't say.
Yeah, they don't, they don't specifically say a hundred and forty-four.
Uh, okay, okay, so that, the, where it says rodent control, replace baits and maintaining all boxes? Um, what, uh, what I'm suggesting here is that the motion include, um, specificity on that and say a hundred and, was it a hundred and forty-four?
Yes.
So twelve for both, one hundred and forty-four boxes. So add that, and that's it? Okay, so, uh, the motion should be that we approve the contract at the price, um, that, that was proposed, uh, but just include in there a hundred and forty-four boxes, where it says rodent control, um, and that if they agree at that point, then, but not earlier, then we send the thirty-day notice to Pest Logic. Okay? So, Rabbit, is, uh, you okay with that motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
And, uh, is there a second, Carl?
I have a second.
Carl seconds? Anybo, anybody in the audience have any, any, uh, further questions? Okay. Does anybody want to be recorded as a no? Hearing none, it's approved?
I, I have one.
Oh, you came too late. Your question was too late. It's already approved. That's why I said to you. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead. What if we four boxes in the future?
Well, we just said one forty-four in this one. I don't know how that works.
How, how many of, um, boxes they normally put in, uh, in per building? Um, I don't know exactly for every-
One forty-four would be twelve each.
Twelve per building?
Including twelve of us. That's what I- Okay. Uh, so that's approved. Next item is pool furniture?
We can ask how much for additional.
What about it?
Additional, um, boxes.
She's still waiting.
Just let me think one, one, one thing at a time. What was it, what's her, what was that?
It's pool furniture.
Pool furniture. Pool furniture.
Pool furniture was ordered. It'll hopefully be here at the same time the awning will, which is the beginning of March.
Okay, so what, what are we approving here?
You're ratifying that?
No, according to them, it's supposed to be by the end of the first week of March. But I don't wanna-
Just the weeks.
But, um, Nancy, could you explain what we're ratifying, because for the, for the benefit of the members?
The pool furniture was ordered, and the cost was, mm, twenty-five, three ninety-five. And-
It says Leisure Creations, is that the name of-
That's the name of the company, yes.
The vendor?
Which is right after, if we're, it's right after that.
Okay.
You, you didn't actually see it, if you turn the page there.
That was already purchased, you said?
Yes.
Okay, so this is ratification. And that's it? If the, just the twenty-five, just that one item, right? It's twenty-five?
Yes.
Okay, so, the motion would be to, um, ratify the purchase of patio, what is this? Uh, patio furniture? No, pool.
Pool furniture.
Pool furniture, sorry. Pool furniture, um, from Leisure Creations at the price of twenty-five thousand three hundred and ninety-five dollars. Um, and I guess that's it, right? Uh, so, do we have a motion? Rabbit made it. Uh, Carl seconds? Okay, now a discussion first on the board. And that, and now, we have a question over there.
Why can't anything is gonna be done with the old furniture?
Exactly, that was my-
Okay, we had the, the same question from both. Um, Nancy, could you take that? The question was, what's gonna be done with the old furniture?
Hasn't been decided yet.
Hasn't been decided, but I could tell you that there's, there's a lot of broken things right there.
Yeah, I know.
But we've been getting rid of them slowly, I'm gonna be honest with you. We think it's not, it's a liability, we've been getting rid of it.
So it's our responsibility to dispose of them?
Yes.
It's gonna be our cost and responsibility to dispose of the old furniture?
Yes, I believe so, yes.
But remember, they're made out of steel and rubber, so you can't just throw them away.
Whatever it is, it's our responsibility, so it's gonna cost us time and money.
Might be able to sell it. It was perfect.
I believe, uh, Bob was considering putting it up for sale on different eBay, different, uh, if we can get anything out of it, fine.
Maybe Goodwill would pick it up. Google will only give you a tax rebate. I know, but at least we don't have to dispose of it. Yeah, but if you can sell it for scraps, you can get money back out of it, right? Yeah.
By the way, the new board will have the opportunity to dispose of these, and maybe in a profitable way.
Yes.
That sounds like a good idea.
Derry?
Yes?
Sounds very good. I have a question, as regards to-
I remember last year sometime, we had discussed a repairing of those chairs, and there was a company that, uh, do you still have the date with that company?
Yeah, I, I don't know what else has, but I could, that's what's up, but-
I would like, maybe to contact them to see if they would have priced the furnitures that we have.
Um, Carl, did, is that a motion, or just as, you know, directed to the manager?
Just to research.
Okay, all right. So, anyway, um, Nancy, will you follow up on that?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, so there's a motion and a second on the table, uh, regarding the pool furniture, to purchase, uh, to ratify the purchase from Leisure, uh, Creations. So, anybody wanna be recorded as a no? Hearing none, it's approved. Next item?
One, just, one thing further, Nancy?
Sorry? I mean-
Derry? And if they are interested-
Can you speak in the mic, please? Yeah, they can't, Carl, they can't hear you talking to the mic.
I says, if they aren't interested in the furnitures, whatever that offer is, we'll take it.
Okay.
What, what did you say?
He said, whatever's wrong with that is taken.
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, so, pool furniture is approved. Right, that was not that one. Items?
No, every mistake.
Sorry?
Items was a mistake, it shouldn't have been on here.
Oh, it shouldn't?
No, we're all set with the items. We're all set.
They are? Oh, okay, so, uh, we'll just, um, yeah. We'll skip that item. Next item, fire sprinkler yearly testing.
Company is American Fire Sprinkler Services. And the fire sprinkler test proposal is three thousand fifty, and that will begin in March.
And what happens if people do not have their keys in the office?
They're gonna be in big trouble.
We've already started to post on there that if we don't have the key, we'll break the lock, we will change the lock, and it goes in their ledger, they have to pay.
Okay, so Nancy, could you explain the item again for the benefit of those who are not aware?
The fire sprinklers?
Yeah, explain, uh, why we-
Okay, yearly, we have a fire sprinkler, um, inspection, which they go inside every unit, they check every fire sprinkler to see if it's working. If one of them is not working, they will replace it at that time. Inside of your units, yes.
Where?
Where are the units?
They're on the walls, way up high.
In the unit?
Inside of the units.
Inside the unit?
It says, that one looks like you?
You're confused with another building, not in this community.
Almiron's.
Almiron. Almiron. Very loud, Almiron.
And we did, even not a year ago, less than a year.
From the doors in the hall, in the building.
Backflow, the fire sprinkler.
Nobody was in the fire sprinkler.
Fire sprinklers for the clubhouse, for a meth home. Meth, yeah. Backflows for some complete-
You got a sprinkler, let me know, because I don't have a sprinkler. You got a sprinkler?
Now you, now you're asking.
You got a sprinkler?
Now you're asking.
I don't have a sprinkler.
Um, there seems to be some confusion on this item, so, uh, Nancy, what, what is actually being proposed here?
Turn the page to the, where it says American Fire. They have a list of all the things that they, that they come in and inspect. Says inspection type, fire sprinkler, trash chute, we're told them-
Okay, okay, so, uh, considering the fact that there aren't any sprinklers in the units, that whole thing about the keys, they're not gonna need anybody's keys. If that's the case- If that's the case, unless they're inspecting the, the, uh, fire alarms.
Fire alarms.
The alarm. Less from here.
Huh?
Even less from here, was the company...